Hello and good afternoon to everyone and welcome to the 10th Ward Community-Based Public Hearing on RNG Metal Recycler Environmental Permit Application. My name is Norma Seledon and it is a pleasure to serve as your facilitator this evening. I am bilingual, but tonight you will hear me speak primarily in English because simultaneous translation into Spanish is available on a separate phone line. You're going to see that information on our screen. And now I'm going to give these directions in Spanish. Hola a todos y bienvenidos a la audiencia pública basada en la aplicación de permiso ambiental RMG Metal Recycler en la comunidad del décimo distrito municipal. Mi nombre es Norma Seledon y es un placer servir como su facilitadora esta noche. Yo soy bilingüe, pero esta noche me escucharán hablar principalmente en inglés porque estaremos ofreciendo traducción simultánea al español disponible en una línea telefónica separada. Para acceder a esa línea de traducción, usted puede llamar al número en la pantalla que es 605-313-5111 y el número de acceso es 137080. No es necesario tener un número de identificación, simplemente presione el símbolo de crucigrama o en inglés que se le llama el hashtag. De nuevo, el número es 605-313-5111. Nada más les pedimos que tomen en cuenta, si usted entró a esta reunión usando su computadora necesita traducción al español, marque la línea de traducción para seguir en esta reunión en español. Desafortunadamente, si usted está viendo esta reunión en su teléfono, necesitará una segunda línea telefónica si necesita estos servicios en español. Así es que necesitará colgar y marcar la línea de traducción para seguir en español. Y debido a limitaciones con la tecnología, no podemos hacer la presentación en inglés y en español simultáneamente. Una versión en español de toda la información que usted va a ver en pantalla se va a publicar en un micrositio de web y al final de la presentación yo les daré el enlace. So just quickly, for anybody needs translation, you can use the number that was on screen. I'll repeat that number, that's 605-313-5111 and that access number is 137080. And you do not need an identification number, you just press the hashtag or pound sign. And I want to give our neighbors a few moments to dial into the Spanish line. And while we wait, I want to let you know that if you experience any issues with technology, you can contact our community engagement team at communityengagement@cityofchicago.org. Y si tenemos vecinos de habla hispana todavía, nada más quiero avisarles que además si ustedes experiencia problemas con la tecnología, se pueden poner en contacto inmediatamente con nuestro equipo de enlace comunitario en la dirección que está en pantalla, community engagement at cityofchicago.org. One other thing that we want to let you know is this public hearing is also being recorded and it's going to be posted on the city's microsite after the meeting. The website is on the screen and you will see here that begins with www.chicago.gov. And by taking part in the webinar, you are agreeing to be recorded. Esta audiencia pública también está siendo grabada y será publicada en el micrositio de la ciudad después de la reunión. El sitio web está en pantalla y al seguir participando ahora en esta sesión usted está indicando que va de acuerdo con la grabación. Vamos a empezar. Let us begin. Today's public hearing is intended primarily as a listening session. Nearly 300 people have signed up. Because we want to be sure that the community members most directly impacted by the RMG permit application have a chance to be heard, we are prioritizing input from the residents of the 10th Ward. We hope to give as many people who would like to speak a chance to speak. So we are limiting remarks to two minutes. However, if you can keep your remarks to less than that, this would allow more neighbors to speak. We also want you to know that if your point has already been made, we want you to please give up your spot so that others may speak on new points. And in order to maximize the number of people who can speak, we will also try to minimize the amount of time we spend engaging in questions and answers. Quick and easy questions will be answered, but more complex ones will be responded to after the meeting on the microsite. You can also put your questions in the Q&amp;A section of the Zoom portal. You're going to find this at the bottom of your screen towards the left. Right? Throughout the presentation, these questions will also be posted after the meeting on the microsite. The chat function has been disabled for this meeting because of concerns about Zoom bombing or interruptions that have occurred in prior public meetings. And then finally, the written public comment period for this permit application has been extended in light of the holidays. The deadline for public comments is now January 14 of 2021 and comments can be sent to envcomments@cityofchicago.org. So make comments tonight or through the written comment period. They're of equal weight and they will be given full consideration. I want to go over the purpose of the hearing tonight, which is to provide information about recycling permit process and to hear community input about the RMG application. And of particular interest are comments that address whether the application meets the requirements of the recycling rules and ordinance, as well as what special conditions could be included in a potential draft permit to address neighborhood concerns. I want to also provide you with a quick overview of the various processes and departments involved. There is the zoning board of appeals, which reviews applications for special use and approves lands uses. There's the Department of Buildings, which reviews applications for permits to construct, renovate, and demolish buildings. And then there is the Chicago Department of Public Health, which reviews applications for facilities proposing to engage in certain regulated activities such as operating air pollution control equipment and recycling. Here is the agenda for the day. So we are going to have a meeting overview and a commitment to equity that is going to be provided by the Chief Sustainability Officer, Angela Tobaj. We will also have remarks from 10th Ward Alderwoman Susan Sedlowski-Garza. From the Chicago Department of Public Health is our Commissioner, Dr. Allison Arwadi. And also on hand is a member of this comments. And finally, supported by the Mayor's Office of Community Engagement. We have a brief presentation and after the presentation, we're going to begin our public comments period. I'm going to call on each of the speakers by name and be unmuted so that you can share your comment. And I remind you that we are at the mercy of technology, so I ask for your patience and grace as we switch between speakers. I also remind you that your limit to your comments is two minutes so that others have a chance to speak. And you will be hearing me interrupt you and I apologize for that ahead of time, 30 seconds before your time ends so that that'll help you wrap up your comments. And with that, I would like to introduce you to the city's Chief Sustainability Officer, Angela Tobaj. Angela?
Thank you, Norma, and thank you all for being here tonight. I want to thank the Chicago Department of Public Health, also known as CDPH, the Mayor's Office of Community Engagement, and Alderwoman Garza and her staff for co-hosting us this evening. I know that evening meetings require you to step away from your personal commitments like work or like family, so I want you to know that we sincerely appreciate your participation and your presence here tonight. On behalf of the Mayor's Office, I just want to convey that your feedback is of great importance to us. We will continue to work closely with our departments, with Alderwoman Garza and local stakeholders to best serve the community as this permit review is underway and beyond. We will be providing ongoing updates as they become available. We will continue to engage in more public dialogue on this and other environmental topics. And we will continue to advance the Mayor's air quality reform agenda, including changes to the zoning code and continued rules and regulatory reforms in partnership with CDPH and other departments. So thank you in advance for your comments on this proposed development. We look forward to hearing from you tonight or in written form at a later date. And with that, I will turn it back over to Norma.
Thank you, Angela, and it's now my privilege to introduce you to 10th Ward Alderwoman Susan Sedlowski-Garza to share remarks with all of you.
Thank you, Norma. I don't want to take too much time because I know that there's a lot of people that want to speak. I just want to say thank you to everyone that's here tonight. I know this is something that has become an issue that a lot of people care about, that a lot of people want to, you know, give comments to. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for taking some time out to make sure that we hear you. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Alderwoman, for your concern and your remarks. And now I leave you with Chicago Commissioner Dr. Allison Arwadi, who is going to share additional information about this process. Dr. Arwadi?
Yes, thank you, Norma, and thank you everybody so much for joining. So I, obviously, when you usually hear me speaking, it's about COVID. And I do want to share, you're the very first group that I'm going to share that the advisory group to the FDA has just recommended approval of the first COVID vaccine. So we're excited about that. It's putting me in a good mood for going into this meeting. And I really do want to hear from all of you about your concerns, your suggestions. As you heard, this is not a meeting about zoning or location of facilities. This is a meeting about our permitting process and the role that the health department plays in protecting human health and the environment. And I know that some of you know a lot about this and I know that some of you may be newer. So I want to take a few minutes just to help explain some of the rules that are in place and particularly the things we're most interested in hearing from you about. So over the summer, the Chicago Department of Public Health created our first ever rules for recycling facilities that are large, that accept over 1,000 tons of recyclable materials per day or that process and shred vehicles. These went into effect in June and there was a similar public comment process on these draft rules. We did get input from nine environmental justice groups, thank you, to everybody who really gave good input. We made big changes due to that and did impose mandates that are more extensive than state and federal requirements. So let's talk a little bit about what is in these new rules. And when an applicant puts in a permit, they have to show that they can meet the requirements of all of the new rules. So there is a ban on visible dust leaving the property. There is a required enclosure of any auto shredder. There is also a required enclosure of any shredding waste, which is sometimes called auto fluff. There are height limits on stockpiles. There's requirements for thorough cleaning of paved and unpaved surfaces. And there's a ban on excessive noise. All of this is in addition to the rules that would be in place for any recycling facility. There also are a lot more details about the plans that are required and a lot of this is new. So we require any large recycling facility to conduct an air impact study. They need to model impacts from equipment, from processes, from road dust and from other sources to ensure that any facility will stay within the federal standards for air. They also have to submit an action plan detailing steps to prevent any air pollution violations. They have to submit a fugitive dust plan. Fugitive dust means dust leaving the property line, as well as strong controls to prevent that. They need to submit a noise study to ensure compliance with the city's noise ordinance, as well as now a traffic study for any new and expanding facilities to ensure that impacts to local traffic are limited. And then finally, detailed plans related to storm water management and pollution prevention plans to ensure adherence with city ordinances and the Clean Water Act. There are also requirements related to monitoring as well as transparency. Again, new in our large recycling rules that went into effect in June. There is a requirement for continuous 24/7 air monitoring. There's also a requirement for air monitoring to be placed near any sensitive areas, such as homes, parks, or schools, specifically if those are within 660 feet and where the air study shows that federal limits could be exceeded. There's also, and this is brand new, real-time automatic notification to CDPH if particulate matter, meaning particles in the air, exceed the warning level over even a 15-minute period. Those of you who follow along know that these limits are set over 24 hours, but we're requiring, if there's an issue even in 15 minutes, there needs to be notification so that we can investigate and correction can be done. There's also a requirement for noise monitoring as well as assessment, as well as hotspot monitoring of stockpiles. There's infrared sensors that need to be placed to help prevent fires within the piles of things for recycling. There are additional requirements for stringent record keeping as well as reporting. And then there's new requirements related to public notice and comments for any variance request. So when we put some of this together, and if some of you have already looked at the permit application that's available online, you've seen some drawings and I wanted to just help you understand how this fits together. So the red here represents the facility boundary. The two blue boxes represent where the now required to be enclosed shredder would be located, as well as the enclosed auto fluff area. The blue dots represent where misting cannons would be placed. Those are cannons that spray water to help keep dust down. Again, visible dust is not, can't leave the property. And then you see those two red dots, the large dots. Those are the proposed locations of air monitors. And basically, based on the prevailing winds at this location, one of these is downwind, one of these is upwind. Because this facility is not within 660 feet of any sensitive location, the nearest residence is about 1,200 feet away, these were placed to best be able to capture both upwind and downwind air monitoring. You'll also note that those are what would allow the real-time notification to the health department of any reportable action level exceedance. And then some of the things that I mentioned, like the pile height limit, the stockpile monitoring, the noise monitoring, would all take place within that facility boundary. There's requirements for opacity monitoring and street sweeping. And this just helps you understand how some of these new requirements would fit and what this applicant is proposing as part of their application. So a little bit about the CDPH permitting process. Permits are issued only if applicants meet both zoning and environmental requirements. CDPH is involved in the environmental requirements portion of this. The CDPH Commissioner, me, can require special conditions based on past violations or other concerns. Recycling cannot begin even if a permit is granted until CDPH reviews and approves all required permits and completes a pre-operation inspection to ensure that all equipment is in place as has been proposed. And then enforcement of all of our permitted facilities includes both routine and complaint-based inspections to ensure that all of the operations are consistent with the permit. And then the health department issues citations if violations are found. So as we move into the public comment period, we are especially interested in comments related to what I have just described. Whether the application is meeting the requirements of the recycling rules and the ordinance, and also your thoughts about what special conditions could be included in a potential draft permit to be able to address neighborhood concerns. Just as a reminder, comments will be limited to two minutes with a 30-second warning provided. If we don't get to your comments verbally, you can also submit them in writing. Send them by email to envcomments@cityofchicago.org. The deadline to submit is extended to January 14, 2021. And as you heard, both oral and written public comments receive equal weight will be considered in the application review and preparation of a draft permit.
Thank you, Dr. Arwadi. So before that we move on to the public comment period, I just want to remind our Spanish speakers here. Si acaso tenemos algunas personas de habla hispana, quiero recordarles que tenemos una línea de traducción al español y para tener acceso a eso pueden marcar el número, momentito, se los doy en un segundo, con número de acceso 137080. So I want to also remind us that we have a list of about 60 people who have requested to speak. And as a reminder, also, we are prioritizing individuals who requested to provide an oral comment who live in the 10th Ward. If we do not get to your comment, and we are going to do everything possible to do that, and you would, or if you would prefer to submit a comment in writing, please make sure that you email And again, we are going to limit your comments to two minutes. I'm going to remind you when 30 seconds are left and at that point, we respectfully will ask you to wrap up. Your microphone will be cut off at the two-minute mark and I'm going to call on the next speaker after those two minutes are up. There's a couple of technology issues that I'm going to want to flag in advance because of the system we are using. Please be patient as we switch from one speaker to the next. In addition, if there are comments received in Spanish, we're also going to have a little slight delay to give our interpreter a chance to translate the comment into English. And finally, we know that there are deep feelings and profound concerns surrounding this application. However, we're going to ask you to remain as respectful in your tone, in your language. We do understand and we welcome passionate expressions of views, but if the line is crossed to disrespectful or vulgar language, you're not going to be allowed to continue and you will be removed from the meeting. I also want to let you know that if you leave the Zoom meeting, you're not likely to come back in. Our registration is at capacity and Zoom may not let you back in. So please listen carefully as I call out speaker names. I'm going to call out the next speaker and the one who will follow so that you can be prepared. And we are going to give speakers a short amount of time after their name is called to begin their comment. If we don't hear from you after a few seconds, then we are going to move on to the next speaker. So our first speaker would like to share a comment in Spanish. Socorro Laureano. And after that, we'll follow Kate Kovell or Kovall.
Just one second, hold on.
Thank you. And if Socorro is not available, we will move on to Matt Nelson. So Socorro is not with us. Is Matt Nelson available?
I'm here. Ed on mute, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Matt. Please go ahead.
Hey, my name is Matt Nelson and I live on the 113th block of Avenue L, right next to Washington High School. And I use Rowan Park, which is right across the street from the recycling operations three times a day. Twice to exercise my dogs and once for my own exercise. The 10th Ward area has been the heart of Chicago industry for 150 years. Reason for that is that we are located at the point of Lake Michigan and the Kaimat River system. Industry was able to easily get the raw materials that they needed and then send out their finished products. It is why the steel industry originally grew up in the 10th Ward area. We used to have US Steel, Southworks, Interlake Steel, Wisconsin Steel, and Republic LTV Steel. I worked for 15 years at Republic Steel, which is now the site of the recycling operations. Those were good-paying jobs and I remember when everyone in the ward was upset when those facilities shut down, even though they were 1,000 times dirtier than any recycling operation. Do people want the 10th Ward to look like next door, like Indiana? Or do, or it look like the boarded-up buildings and pick-a-lots of the West Side wards of Chicago? Widing has plenty of industry, including the enormous BP operation and they have a beautiful downtown and stable neighborhood. Industry brings jobs, which is what we need to keep our neighborhood stable. Recycling operation has been deemed safe by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency and it will be monitored.
Mr. Nelson, you have 30 seconds to wrap up. Thank you.
The opponents complain about pollution on Facebook, but they never say what. What exactly is going to be released in the air in unsafe amounts? They never tell you that because they have no answer. I support the expansion of the operations, which have been there for almost 20 years with no complaints. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Next up, we have Kate Kovell. And following Kate, we have Fraylan Núñez. Kate, whenever you are ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I live on 112th and Green Bay. Landfills, a coal gasification plant, two pet coke storage sites, two sites that store products containing manganese, a known neurotoxin, the shroud site, which who knows what neurotoxins are located there, and now General Iron, which will add to at least five metal shredding recycling facilities in the 10th Ward. And that's all I can think of in the few minutes I sat down to prepare for my statement. And this is only what I have experienced in my almost 20 years living in this neighborhood on and off. It's always something, some toxic industry to fight. I've already heard of all of those studies, everything Dr. Arwadi spoke of. We already heard all of that for the several other fights that any of you have been part of. I don't understand how those who create, vote on, and ultimately control public policy can allow this open-air industry of bulk storage to exist so close to people's homes, schools, and shopping centers and parks, like the previous guy spoke of. The industrial revolution is over. The days of getting a job at the local steel mill are over. It is 2020. We know it is unsafe. We know the long-term health impacts that heavy metals, such as lead and manganese, and particulate matter have, which is any dust. We know that our children, including my five-year-old son, are going to be negatively impacted from the decisions that people in power continue to make. So you might as well start instituting a whole new slew of asthma vans to park outside of Washington Elementary and High School if this goes down. And I hope that the rest-
You have 30 seconds, I'm sorry.
And I hope that the rest of you rest easy tonight, knowing that children in your life don't live here. And Sue, I don't know what happened, but I hope you wake up because the children in your family do live here. The days of these jobs are over. A better, healthier world is possible where we don't have to constantly be worrying and struggling with the- A better, healthier world is possible where we don't have to constantly be worrying and struggling with the physical and mental health impacts of living here. And working people know we cannot depend on those in power to make it happen. So we have to force you to make decisions in our best interest because you work for us. Or take the power and do it ourselves by any means necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Kovell. We now have Fraylan Núñez. And after Mr. Núñez, we have Roque Romo. Fraylan, whenever you are ready.
Sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you to everyone that is present. Thank you, Alderman. Special thank you to Alderman Garza, her staff, and to all the folks behind the scenes that make this great city of Chicago work. My name is Fraylan Núñez and I am a lifelong resident of South Chicago and board member of Lake Effect Development and Economic Development Organization 51C3 of the 10th Ward. I'm very passionate of my community and heavily involved. I grew up in the late 80s, just as the steel industry was leaving. Leaving devastation behind from unemployment, unemployed steel workers. Such as my father that had to figure out another way to earn a living wage to raise a family. This devastation didn't just leave a lot of families without employment options, but it also left a lot of vacant land all over the 10th Ward that nobody wants to clean up to invest back into the community that once was thriving. I have a lot of experience in economic development. I worked for a small nonprofit in Lincoln Park for 11 years up until 2018. I know what working across the street from a scrapyard looks like. Because my office used to overlook the weight stations at the, at the General Iron Plant. It is not a pretty sight by any means. And when you work or live feet away from a crusher shredder, it literally shakes you. But don't get it twisted, everyone. This is not what RMG will look like in Haguish. I have seen the expansion of their facility. And what I saw tells me that they have gone through great lengths to make sure they are not that I saw, that I saw, that I once looked out my window for 11 years. The nearest resident will be thousands of feet away from their operation with state of the art systems that will create a clean operation. You can refer back to slide number 13 that Dr. Awadi presented. It will look nothing-
Mr. Núñez, you have 30 seconds.
It will look nothing like a typical scrapyard and what that looks like in Chicago. Such as what you see in Pilsen or Donna Street on 85th and Baltimore in South Chicago. The scrapyard is a few feet away from someone's front yard. RMG is open to working with the community and I am very excited about that. But there is a very small percentage of individuals that not just oppose this expansion, but made it their job to bash them on social media, newspaper articles, protest permits at the mayor's house, and it is just wrong. We're seeing more and more economic development interest on Avenue O, and we will see a lot more once this project is complete. This is what our ward needs. It needs jobs, beautification, cleaner industry, and a strong community. In my opinion, this permit application meets the requirements for the permitting, and I stand behind RMG and their expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Núñez. We next have Roque Romo. And following Roque Romo, we have Ana Torres Romero. Whenever you are ready, Roque.
Hi, I'm Roque. I live on 107th and O. I am actually an employee of Reserve Marine. And I feel more than comfortable with everything that we are doing. And everything my company is actually doing to make sure we control all the dust, all the environment. It's actually a great company to even work for. The owners there take very good care of us as an employee. And I've been on the east side for my entire life. I was born and raised here. I honestly have no issues with my little nieces playing outside or even have to worry about something getting into their lungs due to this company. I am actually grateful that they're actually bringing more community positivity back into this neighborhood. And we are doing everything we are possibly capable of doing to make sure we are going above and beyond to make sure everything is safe. And that's it on my part.
Thank you so much, Mr. Romo. We have next Ana Torres Romero. And following Ana, we have Nina Mani. Ana Torres Romero, whenever you are ready. Okay, then let's, it maybe that Ana Torres is not on, let us move on to Nina Mani. And following Nina Mani, we have Maria Moreno. Nina, if you are on. Okay, we will give Nina two more seconds. If not, let us move on to Maria Moreno. And following Maria Moreno is Blanca Hernández. Maria Moreno, if you're on, you can go ahead. Okay.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay.
Sorry, I was trying to- If all of the remediations are going to be successful, why weren't these put in place while General Iron was on the north side? General Iron was not allowed to remain on Lincoln Park. Instead, you moved this known polluter and violator of environmental regulations to the south side. There is sufficient suffering and, I mean, we've been heavy hit by the worst of the pandemic. Our children have a 31% more instances of asthma. My children are part of this number, and now they are forced to endure more. Particular matter will be swept up. Obviously, it's clear that this is also going to be released into the air. I'm asking that you deny the permit and discontinue the continual attack on the impoverished people of color in this area. You talk about the fact that their homes won't be close to this area, that the closest house is a thousand of feet. That separates General Iron from the nearest home, but particulate matter is airborne. There are no new jobs that are going to be created. The people who are working on the north side are going to come here. I'm asking you, please deny this permit. This area of the city has been hit hard and I'm asking for it to be discontinued, this systemic pollution and systemic racism against our area. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno. And next to speak is Blanca Hernández, followed by Olga Bautista. Ms. Hernández, feel comfortable to start when you're ready?
Hi, I apologize if you hear my three year old in the autistic spectrum yelling around me. I have a 13 year old who is graduating from high, from eighth grade this coming summer. And I am really concerned about sending him to George Washington High School because other community members had already stated. All the, all the companies that we have around our ward, like a lot of people has mentioned, we are tired of being the dumping grounds of the city. It wasn't anywhere else in the city or in the state that this company could have been moved to. Like enough is enough. And I, like I, like the previous person has said, I ask and I plead that the city denies the permit to this company and move it elsewhere. We have enough, enough pollution. I don't know if you heard or if you're aware that recently the grounds where our kids play baseball are contaminated. I cannot even take my kids to play baseball because the field where he plays is going to be contaminated. And now we have this on top of that. If that's not environmental racism, what is? The community needs jobs, yes, but not at the expense of our health, of our people, our elderly, and our children. And if all of the commissioners think that this is okay, I will invite them and their family to move into our community. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Hernández. And now we have Olga Bautista. And following Olga, we have Julie Sykes. Olga, feel free to start whenever you're ready. We can hear you, go ahead, Olga.
I guess I can't see what's on the screen. My name is Olga Bautista. I'm a board member of the Southeast Environmental Task Force and the founder of the Southeast Side Coalition to Ban Pet Coke. And we have been working with the city for a very long time. We have actually tried to help craft metal shredding rules that were going to be protective of our community. And what you're seeing now is a very watered down version of the things that the community asked for. Also, this this process of allowing, letting us comment and giving us a 10 day notice is very disrespectful. I think that the city had a very long time to figure out a plan. And instead of preparing a plan that was going to make it an opportunity for meaningful participation, the city decided to hold this meeting between Thanksgiving and Christmas. This is just another example of the kind of backward thinking. And the fact that the city really is not interested in bringing equity and environmental justice to our community. Just last month, in a letter to HUD, the city deputy corporation counsel, John Hendricks, accused the community residents of fighting, that were fighting to stop General Iron's move of exaggeration. And say that our fears about air pollution are unwarranted. So right now, when a company comes in and they ask for a permit, there's not a consideration of what is happening in the community next door to that company, what's happening. There's not like a five mile radius and saying like, this is the-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Olga, you have 30 seconds.
This is the amount of emissions that are allowed in this area. And I think it is absolutely unconscionable to allow so many companies to emit so much pollution in such a small little area. And the amount of hospital visits from kids who have asthma issues speak for themselves. These policies do not go far enough. And all the truck traffic that's going to be coming into these companies are not even considered. And that is a lot of diesel emissions that we're going to have to deal with. And it's going to cost real, it's going to, it's going to be a real life cost to having this company operate in this way because the shredding, the metal shredding rules are not going far enough to protect us. And it is extremely dangerous that the, that the city is even considering that this move happened. Because if it wasn't working on the north side, then it's definitely not going to be working here.
Thank you very much, Olga. We have next Julie Sykes. And following Julie, we have Oscar Sanchez.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
We can hear you, Julie.
Okay, I wasn't sure I was having issues with my mic. Okay, I just need to express how disappointed I am in Mayor Lightfoot, our alderwoman, and their whole administration. I mean, how dare they let this happen on their watch? I feel they're taking advantage of our community during this pandemic to push through their agenda with General Iron so they can all line their pockets at our community's expense. General Iron isn't capable of following mandated guidelines or running a safe company. And I feel they should really seriously be shut down. And shame on the mayor for even considering approving General Iron's last permit. We have already suffered so much and taken on the pollution burden for Chicago. We should not have to sacrifice our future generations for your profit and greed. This meeting is making it seem like we have a say in the final permit approval process, which to me is very doubtful. General Iron is already updating their facility. And they would not be putting money or effort into upgrades without knowing that the mayor and alderwoman are 100% backing their move in permits. I've lived in this community for over 50 years and I have not seen any significant long term investment into our neighborhood. We all know this meeting will accomplish nothing and Mayor Lightfoot has already greenlighted this move of General Iron into our backyard. My goal in this meeting is to demand that General Iron close. I don't want them in my community or harming any other community. They should relocate to a nonpopulated area so they can do their, do their work and not harm anyone's health. And if they're not going to close or move somewhere else, the very least the mayor, alderwoman, and general iron can do at this point is sink some of that money they're lining their pockets with and invest, improve, and protect our 10th Ward residents. Thank you very much for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. Next up to speak is Oscar Sanchez. And following Oscar Sanchez is Mariana Casanova Carrillo.
Hello. Can you hear me? Great. So my name is Oscar Sanchez. I'm a proud resident of the Southeast Side. And I have to say, how many times does the city and alderwoman and mayor have to hear that we do not want these industries here? How many times do you have to see parents cry to say that they don't want these children exposed to these contaminants? How many times do we have to see people die and people have respiratory issues? For us to say that enough is enough, you see the whole community coming here, 300 individuals, and you don't want to hear every- I want you to see their tears. I want you to see our fear of these industries coming into our- times. So to give you all that we, we're announcing a walkout. This is bullshit. And we're walking out because the city is, the city is not doing enough to protect its constituents, its residents. So we are having a presentation on, in the Southeast Environment Book. And I ask you to join us after you presentate, after your public commentary. That's where I'm going to be. We expect better.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. I'm not sure. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Next up to speak is Mariana Casanova Carrillo. And after Mariana, we have Bob Strong. Ms. Casanova Carrillo, whenever you are ready. Okay, we will give Mariana two seconds. Okay, let's move on to Bob Strong. And after Bob, Dulce Jimenez will speak. Okay, we will ask the next person to speak and that is Thomas Sazak. Thomas, please go ahead. And after Thomas will be Marvin Forte.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Thomas, go ahead. Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez. We are, we are having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. You're- There is feedback that we're hearing, we can't hear your voice.
Computers that are close together, I suggest that you mute one of them. It sounds like there are two sources that are screaming.
Can I hear you?
We can, we can hear you now. Yes, we can hear you now.
I can hear you. Yeah. Okay. My name is Thomas Sazak. I'm a 20 year old resident, 52 hours, a very interesting number in the community. I'm an employee at Orange since 2015, other than Eastside, and I support Southside Recycling. I'm here around the 1940s, which I'm scared of public, because of all of this, we're not happy on constant nature of people, asking each other. I certainly was the one in the background, and I, I would go to the right products for recycling, or put into the landfill.
Mr. Sazak, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Mr. Sazak? Mr. Sazak, I'm sorry to have muted you. I don't want you to waste your time. We could not hear you. So I'm not sure if you'd like to either turn off one of your devices and try to come back in. We can call on you again. Or you can come, you can comment through email. Okay, I am going to move on to the next person, but we welcome you to come back. Perhaps if you can turn off one of your devices. We're going to move on to commentary from Marvin Forte, or Fort. And after Marvin is Brianna Bertacci.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Marvin. Please go ahead.
My name is Marvin Forte, and I'm a 10th Ward resident. I've seen opportunities expand in the area. Commercial business has grown and job growth has provided economic stability for the region. Not all newcomers have recently been welcomed with open arms, such as General Iron, due to environmental concerns. But what the disagreement represents is an engaged citizenry who is concerned about more than just the economic growth in the region, but about the community we've built and the opportunities for a bright and healthy future for our children and loved ones. That being said, I do approve of Reserve Management Group's application. The application appears to meet the requirements of the recycling rules, and the technology used is up to date and advanced. In researching the company and speaking to colleagues who have had the chance to visit the plant, they have taken care to abide by all safety precautions. Reserve Management Group has operated on Chicago's South Side for more than 30 years with nothing less than a sturdy reputation. They have a history of protecting public health and the environment, and they are a company with a passion and a mission who recognizes these challenges in the 10th Ward. After review of the company, Reserve Management Group is an excellent addition to the 10th Ward because we care about safe, responsible, and sustainable new businesses in our area. RMG is expected to bring new jobs to the region that are clean and safe and will open up economic opportunities for residents. They use green industrial practices and are a model for the kind of manufacturing activity that best interests 10th warders like myself. Given the concerns about pollution in the area, RMG is a company with metal emissions well below what US EPA emissions limits allow, will not exasperate an already rampant problem for our area. Lastly, having more economic resources available will have a positive effect on our neighbors nearby and continue to exemplify the 10th Ward. It's not just a neighborhood of warmth, but of growth as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Forte. Next up to speak is Brianna Bertacci, followed by Marie Collins Wright. Ms. Bertacci? We can't hear you.
You can still hear me, right?
I can hear you now, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, guys. Okay, my name is Brianna Bertacci. I'm a member of the 10th Ward. I'm going to be referencing a small portion of scientific publications validated by the NIH that detail out the medical consequences of exposure to continuous ambient air pollution and particulate matter. All these articles are publicly available on PubMed.gov, a credible online scientific database. In 2014, the International Agency on Research for Cancer cited that 35 separate compounds are released into diesel, are released by diesel and gas exhaust alone. These compounds are known or probable human carcinogens, meaning they're known to be linked to cancer. Assuming the quantity of emissions by General Iron would surpass that released by a single vehicle, let's talk about the exposure, the effects of this exposure. A meta-analysis published in 2015 revealed the following respiratory health effects. Mucosal irritation, coughing and wheezing, shortness of breath, reduced fetal growth, premature birth, low birth weight, intrauterine growth restriction, respiratory infections, lung function growth restriction, asthma development, and asthma exacerbation, three separate respiratory cancers, and chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, or COPD. That's just respiratory. Let's keep going. In 2014, a study added mortality due to cardiovascular diseases, stroke, and altered blood pressure. The 2017 publication added brain inflammation and oxidative stress to that list. These and other adverse effects are more pronounced among the elderly, children, and people with pre-existing medical conditions. These correlations were pulled from four studies. There's over 7,000 on PubMed.gov tracking the adverse event, effects of health, the adverse health effects of air pollution. I demand that CDPH exercise their authority to protect the public and deny this permit. The suggestions proposed here are meek and hollow for its location. We've said it before, and we will continue to say it. If it wasn't good enough for Lincoln Park, why is it good enough for the Southeast Side? It is a racist act-
You'll have 20 seconds, Brianna?
Thank you. It is a racist act to move this facility to a community that is already oversaturated with polluting industries. The guidelines proposed here for permitting recycling facilities demonstrate the continued lack of respect shown by the city of Chicago and CDPH towards the Southeast Side community. For these reasons, I'm walking out of this meeting and draining residents for a people's hearing on the Southeast Environmental Task Force Facebook page. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We now have Marie Collins Wright. And following Marie Collins Wright, we have Maya Rodriguez. Ms. Collins Wright, whenever you're ready.
Hi, yes, this is Marie Collins Wright. The city of Chicago has a very poor history of monitoring these economic opportunities that they want to give to communities of color. And speaking of what we know now in 2020 about environmental justice, it's amazing how that company couldn't be tolerated to remain where it's been for, I don't know how many years, operating with a very poor record of compliance when they're paying attention and they want to move it, they move it to us. Now, we don't need that kind of economic growth or opportunity. We need to have some economic growth in companies that truly are sustainable. We already have railroads, rail yards, we won't even name some of the X-rated skullbone companies that we have over here, not to mention all the landfills. We're already overburdened with many environmental disasters waiting to happen. We do not need another company to come over here and further pollute the air of which the state of Illinois and the city of Chicago has failed for the last 35 years since I've lived here to monitor, or take note, or even try to pretend to be interested in what they're polluting air with. I have myself had a personal experience with a company that was allowed, given a lifetime permit to just completely poison the air, the water, the sewer, and everything else, and there was no accountability. So why in the world, with anybody in their right mind that knows what has happened in the recent past, want to accept another company coming with a list of promises? They would need to have all of these safeguards if it was safe. Think about that. If it was truly safe for children and for people of color, it wasn't safe for the white people that were in Lincoln Park, but it'll be safe for us. Are you kidding me?
20 seconds, Ms. Collins Wright.
It's, it's a disgrace, and you should be ashamed that you can't come up with some other ideas that would relate to safety for people by our school, and stop polluting everything with more and more of the same thing. Where's the new idea? Where's the new energy for something that's going forward, going to really make jobs that'll last instead of killing people in my community?
Thank you, Ms. Collins Wright. Next up, we have Maya Rodriguez. And following Maya, we have Peggy Salasag.
Hi, can you hear me and see me?
Yes, we can, Maya. Go ahead.
Great. My name is Maya Rodriguez. I usually hear her pronouns. I'm a lifelong resident of the 10th Ward, and I've been a lifelong Chicagoan for all of that time. As I've gotten older, I've become more aware of the environmental issues, environmental racism that the Southeast Side faces. And I've been lucky enough to be a research assistant for oral histories about what those industries have done for these people. It's been a known history that these, these acts of environmental racism cause lasting harm to these community members, and that even these safeguards that have been proposed, I don't really think that those will amount to meaningful restrictions, honestly, because of the way that air works and the way that we live in the windy city. It doesn't really feel like it really makes sense to me personally. So that's really my main concern. And honestly, I'm not really sure what else can be said by residents, that this is really scary to be able to think that that's actually going to happen for this neighborhood. Mainly, my last final point is that I am wondering if other people who understand that if this thing comes to the Southeast Side, that it isn't actually going to bring the jobs that people think it is, it's just actually going to push people out of the neighborhood and like deteriorate the neighborhood that people think is actually going to be good. It's going to create more harm. And honestly, I want to live over here for the rest of my life, and I don't really know if that's feasible because of the health problems. It's affected my family for years who's worked with steel mills. I'm pretty sure it's going to affect me now. And on the brink of COVID, that's a recipe disaster for this, this neighborhood. I also encourage people to go to the walk-in, well, really the walkout and the teach-in that is happening. And that's really it. If there are any questions about policy concerns, I would be happy to answer them at a later time with the email that I provide to the city. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maya. Next, we have Peggy Rodriguez, followed by Liliana Flores. Peggy Salasag, whenever you are ready.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Peggy. Go ahead.
Peggy Salasag, I'm a lifelong resident of the Southeast Side, as well as executive director of the Environmental Task Force. I also live within a block of our industrial corridor, so I have firsthand experience with the situation and how it impacts our neighborhoods. I'm here to comment about a few things. First and foremost, I find it interesting that the only way that this permit would be denied is if it didn't meet the zoning requirements or environmental requirements. But there are no, there are no allowances for the impact on the health of the community and how it impacts that or the health of our residents. There are also no allowances for the fact that we know what's best for our community. And so it refers to recycling ordinances and regulations that are only here because of efforts from us to making sure that something was done because we had been inundated with recycling facilities for the past few decades. So it's interesting that we had credence when we thought that there was a need for something here in terms of regulating these industries. And yet now, when we put forth our efforts to say that this is not good for our community, we have no credence. We have no value. They don't believe us. They don't, we're saying they're, we're lying. We don't know what's good. Yet, we were good enough to make sure that we got some recycling standards. So I find that extremely interesting because it makes no sense to me. Secondly, the fact that they gave us 10-
30 seconds. You have 30 seconds, sorry.
The fact that they give us 10 days to review an almost 300-page application that's extremely technical, and then expect us to provide meaningful comments from the public is ludicrous, ludicrous. And once again, they're saying we can provide meaningful comments that they'll accept, but we don't have enough a sense to know what's good for our community. Yet, they're saying we can make meaningful comments. It, they're speaking out of two sides of their mouth. Totally unacceptable, totally unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salasag. We have next Nelly Martinez. And following Nelly Martinez, we have Roman De Leon. Okay, we will give Nelly Martinez two seconds. Okay, let us move on to Roman De Leon. And after Roman De Leon, we have Daniel Reyes. Okay, we're moving on from Roman, and let us go to Daniel Reyes. Daniel, if you're available. After Daniel Reyes, we have Robert Rodriguez.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I've been a lifelong resident of the 10th Ward, and I've always advocated for new businesses. But businesses that just come and destroy and pollute our neighborhood are definitely not needed. Money is already being spent. The EPA is already cleaning up sites in our area. Why have a business come and pollute more? Spend more money, and in 30 years, you know, spend more money and cleaning up their problem. So that's all I really had to say about that.
Thank you so much, Daniel. Next, we have Robert Rodriguez. And after Robert Rodriguez, we have Gina Ramirez. Okay, we will move on from Robert Rodriguez to Gina Ramirez. And after Gina, we have Jose Perez. So Gina, whenever you're ready.
Hi. Hi, my name is Gina Ramirez. I am a third-generation resident of the Southeast Side, and I'm also a member of the Southeast Side Coalition to Ban Pet Coke. We are sick and we are tired of this classic tale of two cities narrative in Chicago, where the South and West sides are the sacrifice zones for the city. It is unfair, it is unjust, and it is racist. I spent most of my son's short six years of his life at meetings like this, taking time away from him hitting milestones, teaching him how to ride a bike, and reading to him at night, because I've spent my evenings at meetings like this advocating for his life, for his health. And it's not right that he can't play on Little League fields because they're filled with lead and arsenic, that he can't breathe air near SH Bell Facility because it's emitting a neural toxin manganese, that we live near Superfund sites, and all of the other devastating toxic legacies that have been here. I've heard a lot of nostalgia for the, the dirty industry that, you know, my father, my grandfather, my great-grandfather worked at. This is the 21st century. There is, we shouldn't have to sacrifice our health for jobs. And that, the Lightfoot administration, our alderwoman, they need to take that into consideration, that there is a just transition out there. There are so many people who are doing clean jobs. And so our future generations deserve the same quality of life as other Chicagoans. We have asked for transparency, cleanups, air monitoring, health studies, expand, expansions to comment periods like this. We're the ones who asked for the extra 15 days. In other words, we have done the city's job for them time after time. It is time for the city to step up and protect the Southeast Side. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ramirez. Next up, we have Jose Perez. And following Jose, we have Rodolfo Camposano. Jose Perez, if you're here, please, go ahead.
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jose Perez. I am a resident of 10th Ward. Actually, I only live minutes in RMG, and I am also employed there. I would just like to start off by saying that RMG has been family to me the minute I interviewed there. They have provided me with opportunity, have taught me many things, and have helped me move forward with my family. And there are many there that also live in the area that feel the same way about RMG. I've been a resident for 13 years. Both my kids go to New Ciata. I currently rent, and I'm looking forward to buying in the area. As an employee and a resident of the area, I would like to honestly say that I feel 100% safe and comfortable with South Side Recycling. Facts, let's get the facts. RMG isn't full compliant. I work there. There's absolutely no dust escaping into the community. We monitor dust and have on a daily basis. We have controls. We are trained in safety and control, and are up to date with OSHA and EPA standards and regulations. and EPA standards and regulations. Our R and G has operated and been providing for the community for over thirty years. I am a hundred percent for sure about Southside Recycling. Since everyone opposed does not have the facts, please, everyone in the community, get the facts before you say no. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Perez. Um, up next, we have Mark Banks. And after Mark Banks, we have Anne Joseph. Mr. Banks, if you are here, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mark.
Oh, yeah, I am. Hi, I look great. Uh, okay, I just want to say a few things. First of all, I want to say that the opening remarks were incredibly disrespectful by Allison Arwadi, because what what she tried to do there was a very common tactic of controlling the discourse, telling us what we can talk about, right? Like, as if this is about a permit. This is not about a permit. This is not about us agreeing to the nature of the permit that you want. This is about ecocide and climate collapse. We live in the age of ecocide and climate collapse. And when you boomers are all gone, we're still going to have to deal with it. Our kids are still going to be dying. The thing is, this has to get cleaned up at some point. It can't go on forever and ever. It's either going to be you clean it, or we clean it later after you're gone, and we finally have the ability to clean it. It has to be cleaned. It's a disaster over there. It's not just a small area where you want to put a wall around it. It's this whole entire South Side. I go hiking all over these places. I've seen all these places. I know these places better than these engineers know them. This place is disgusting. It's a bloated corpse. It's the bloated corpse of capitalism, and it's not coming back to life. Capitalism did this to us. We don't want more capitalism. All right, what some people, I I think there's a lot of residents around here. Some of them are newcomers, thirteen years. I've been here three generations. You just moved here for your job. Look, here's the thing. These people, the the industry that was here is gone. And let me tell you how capitalism works. Other people come and make money on you. Just because a business comes to our neighborhood and fills our lungs with shit doesn't mean that we're going to make any money. Yeah, a few a few class traders are going to get a job here and there. A few politicians are going to line their pockets. But everyone else is going to suffer. Just because there's a business in your neighborhood doesn't mean that that's good for you. People don't, you know, these ideological discourses need to get a little bit untangled here. It's because some capitalist is standing next to you, breathing on your neck, doesn't mean that you're benefiting, right?
You have twenty seconds, Mr. Banks.
Stop killing us. This is about ecocide and climate collapse. It's not about permits or any other fucking bullshit. Stop killing us. Stop killing us and do it now, or your city's going to burn down again.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Uh, we have up next Michelle Favela. And after Michelle, we have Jorge Garcia. Michelle, please go ahead when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Michelle, we can hear you.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm a lifelong resident of the southeast side. I have always grown up here, and I'm also currently a teacher in the southeast side. Um, and I am just extremely disappointed that this is happening. Um, I've grown up here all my life, and just to see this happen to a mile away from the school that I teach at is really disheartening. The school of fifteen hundred kids who I coach and we run outside at Rowan Park, and having them breathe this air is really, um, you know, disgusting that it's happening, right? These explosions happen in the north side, and when the residents of Northside complain, they get what they want. When we complain, we get nothing. And I'm just so sick of this. And the amount of disrespect that has been happening towards this is just so, um, it's so sad. Um, we deserve butter for our kids, for us, and for elderly. So I hope you all say no to General Iron.
Thank you so much, Ms. Favela. Um, next up to speak, we have Irene Ochoa. And after Irene, we have Celia Colon. Irene, whenever you are ready.
Yes, this is Irene Ochoa speaking. So I am, you're welcome. I am a resident um of the 10th Ward. I live across the street from Mann Park. And I I do agree that the trying to control the conversation by telling us what we can talk about is indeed very disrespectful. And giving the community ten days to review a three hundred page document is also completely disrespectful of of community. There can be no meaningful dialogue on that on that without time to read and digest and understand on that. So if you're, if the powers that be are just not happy about the comments they're getting, they didn't allow enough time for people to have a meaningful discourse about it, a meaningful investigation of it. And Allison spoke about the controls that would be in place, the monitoring and so on. But yes, who will be responsible? Who will have the power to monitor? Who will make sure that the equipment is calibrated? What is the, what are the fines? What are, what is, um, you know, many companies can pay the fines when something's not right. It's it makes good business sense for them because the fines aren't adequate. The pollution, you know, that goes on, you know, the asthma in the neighborhood. I have asthma. My son has asthma. And, you know, that this place says they're not going to admit, that's a joke. It is airborne particulate, and it is airborne means it's going to move. You can't, you can't have a landfill and and you smell the stink of it. Why? When you're miles away? Because it is airborne and it moves.
You have twenty seconds, Ms. Ochoa.
Will do the same. So I demand that this permit be denied. I I I'm not asking, I'm demanding as a taxpaying resident that this permit be denied. Stop polluting our area. That something is allowed, that something is within limits that we didn't set, doesn't mean they're safe. It simply means they're within limits that somebody else set. That something is in compliance with a guideline that someone else set does not mean it's safe. Simply means it's within compliance. Who is setting these limits? Who is looking out for us?
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa. Um, we now have Celia Colon up next to speak. And after Celia, we have Ted Stanlos. Uh, Celia Colon, if you are here, when you are ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead, Ms. Colon. You are muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Sorry. So I am a resident, a proud resident of the southeast side. I have been for many, many years. Um, you know, we already are dealing with so much violence and structural racism that exists where there's no economical wealth or development in our community that is green or healthy. I think it's a total disrespect on the mayor, the the our alderwoman to not even include our non-speaking Spanish residents, our Latino residents, because the outreach that was done to even include us only includes people who do not speak Spanish, you know, only English-speaking people. And that's like a total disrespect to the Latinx community. Their voices are not being heard if they don't have children in their homes that understand English or someone. Um, giving us very small amount of time to go over a three hundred page document is just a slap in the fucking face, checking a box, trying to say you have community.
I'm so sorry we had to move on, Ms. Colon. Um, we will next have up Ted Stanlos to speak. And after Mr. Stanlos, we have Gabriela Pantoja Cortez.
Hello.
Yes, Ted, please go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name's Ted Stanlos. I live here in Heggwood, here in the 10th Ward. I've watched the whole General Iron story play out in the press. It really interested me so much. Um, this one especially. Uh, what what's being headlined and what the actual story is behind the headline? The headlines are, General Iron Chronic Polluter Moves Its Operation Out of Wealthy North Side Community to Poor Minority Neighborhood on Chicago's Southeast Side. I suppose it wouldn't be much of a story, uh, to report if longtime southeast Chicago recycling company RMG invests over eighty million dollars to modernize its current facility and purchase state-of-the-art shredder that exceeds a EPA standard, and while at it buys out General Iron on the north side, because that's really what happened. They've been down here for a long time, and they bought out General Iron. Um, this particular story interests me a lot because I worked at Republic Steel, which is the site where General, where uh, Reserve Marine Management Group is located. The industry has changed a lot since I punched a clock on one hundred and sixteenth and Burley. The world has changed a lot. Back in those days, very little attention was paid to pollution, control standards, and thank God, those days are over. We worked without the strong watchful eye of the EPA or the city of Chicago's Department of Health. The state-of-the-art operation at RMG is going to have is going to be monitored. And so it should be. We should be watching what they're doing. Let's be real proactive about our neighborhood. Keep good-paying jobs in our community. The outside press that uh stated those headlines like that are lucky enough to sit at home in front of a computer to work for a paycheck like I'm lucky enough to do now. Most of us on the 10th, in the 10th Ward, have to leave our homes every day and venture out. Let's try to keep more good-paying jobs like the ones that RMG has close to home and our friends that report about the southeast side and don't live here, um, should report accurately what happened. Uh, Reserve Management uh has been here for almost about thirty years. They bought out the assets of General Iron. General Iron isn't moving down here. They bought their assets and are putting in a state-of-the-art shredder.
Thank you, Mr. Stanlos. Your time is up. Is there, do you need a wrap-up comment?
Oh, that's it. That's it. Uh, that, thank you.
Thank you. Um, up next is Gabriela Pantoja Cortez, followed by Lourdes Márquez. Ms. Pantoja Cortez, if you are here, please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Gabriela. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. Hello, my name is Gabriela Pantoja. I'm a lifelong East Sider and a member of United Neighbors of the 10th Ward. I'm here because I firmly believe that RMG or General Iron, or whatever they choose to call themselves, have no place in the east side. This meeting is but another weak attempt at making us feel like we're being heard by the city when we already know money speaks louder for the city of Chicago than the voices of our low-income marginalized community. Luckily for General Iron, there is plenty of blame to go around. Our alderwoman has failed us. She's more focused on setting the record straight than speaking out against a serial polluter. Shame on you. Dr. Arwadi, shame on you for trying to limit the parameters of this conversation, leading for an inconclusive conversation on General Iron in the middle of a pandemic. This demonstrates your hypocrisy about the well-being of Chicagoans. Shame on you. Nostalgia for the days of the steel industry are not going to save our community from the toxins that will fill the lungs of your children. My dad worked for Republic Steel for thirty-three years, and I worry for him now more than ever, knowing that he had to suffer inhaling all of those toxins in an arduous job, and then now he will suffer even more with the toxins in our air. The science behind the pollution putting the southeast side community at risk is simple. Particulate matter will be released into our environment from RMG General Iron and go into our lungs. Just because we can't see it doesn't mean it's not there. Chronic exposure to particulate matter and air pollutants results in higher asthma rates among adolescents, higher lung cancer rates, depression, lower academic performance, and a decreased lifespan. We deserve better than this. Overall, these proposed guidelines and processes for the permitting of large recycling facilities demonstrate the lack of respect shown by the city of Chicago and CDPH to the southeast side community and any other community that faces environmental threats and recycling rules that were supposedly intended to address. For these reasons, I will be joining others who are walking out of this meeting and joining community residents for a people's hearing on General Iron. We deserve clean air. Deny the final permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriela. Um, next up to speak is Rich Martinez. And uh, after that will be Erica Ochoa Perez. Rich Martinez, if you are here, please go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Rich.
All right. Good evening. Pastor Rich Martinez, Nehemiah Family Fellowship Church on the east side. Uh, over the last ten years, residents and families have banded together to fight against and evict dirty industry polluters and the elected officials who protected them. We have victoriously defeated coal gasification plants, landfill expansions, ban pet coke, and uncovered dangerously high levels of manganese contaminating our community. RMG, General Iron, and its business operation will contribute to the degradation of our environment through toxic dust, diesel fumes, noxious odors, and dangerous fires. This type of operation also violates the community's southeast environmental justice principles. RMG will contribute to and exacerbate the already serious health issues of southeast Siders such as cancer, diabetes, and various breathing impairments, especially amongst our most vulnerable senior citizens and children. These issues will have a negative impact, especially on George Washington Elementary School, High School, and Rowan Park. This will also have a negative impact on our property values in light of continued property tax increases. RMG has a proven track record of being bad neighbors and corporate citizens. They have been deceptive in their business practices and have been cited and fined as a result. Fires and explosions at their current location prove that they are hazardous and dangerous to their own employees and the community. There are no promises or assurances that RMG or the city can provide to us that would make a difference. Equally appalling is the lack of respect and regard that elected and city officials have shown our community regards this very important matter. If RMG General Iron cannot operate safely in Lincoln Park, then they cannot operate on the southeast side. We collectively and unanimously say that RMG General Iron is persona non grata on Chicago's southeast side, and we ask that their permits be denied. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Reverend Martinez. We have next Erica Ochoa Perez, followed by Mark Velez.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good, thank you.
I just, thank you. I just wanted to speak on behalf of RMG and Southside Recycling. Um, everybody likes to throw the name General Iron around because unfortunately for General Iron, they didn't like to follow rules. That's not a secret. Please quit bringing it up. RMG, however, does follow rules, and they follow them very well. History has shown it. Everybody else likes to complain about, you know, all the pollution, everything else that's going to happen to this neighborhood. I can say that I guess they prefer the desolate buildings that were left after all the old steel mills were closed out. I was tired of seeing this community not growing. Beyond that, let's talk about streets and everything else. Everybody complains about streets, and they're not paved and all that other stuff. Yes, I have concerns about trucks and everything else and the pollution from that. It's maybe that'll bring some light to this community. Maybe we will get more attention from the city, and our streets will be paved. More businesses will come, not just for, you know, um, growth financially, you know, for the big wigs, but for us too, you know, we will have jobs. And everybody just keeps trying to bring up all that other stuff. I get it. I understand. I live here. I've lived here my whole life. And yes, nostalgia aside, you know, with family that was in the steel mill industry, it's done nothing but good for me and my family. Um, my husband works at Reserve. Yes, I work for the steel industry, not at Reserve, not at General, on my own accord. And it's been a great, and it's very interesting to see it grow. And I do believe that Reserve will follow the EPA rules and everything else, and they are following the regulation. I appreciate everybody's time, and I hope that, you know, we can come to a great decision.
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa Perez. Next up, we have Mark Velez, or Velez. Um, and after that, we have Trinity Amari Colon. Mark, if you're here, please go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
No video?
We can answer you.
Okay, it's okay. Um, so, yes, thank you, everybody. Um, uh, well, where to start? Uh, Dr. Arwadi, uh, thank you for going through those new regulations and all that great stuff. Um, I implore you to drive down to one hundred sixteenth, right by the East Side Plaza, and take a look at the, at the facility right now. The height limits, I see them, I don't see any restrictions. These things are bigger, taller than a house. Drive down one hundred and sixth street. Our river has piles of metal, and I don't even know what, um, you know, just blowing all over the place. The north Um, you know, just blowing all over the place. The north side has, has beautiful buildings and landscaping. And we have, you know, our landscape is this, you know, ugly industry. Um, the east side has its problems, environmental problems. There's no, there's no denying that. And will, will General Iron or whatever this new facility is gonna, is that gonna make a big impact? Uh, I mean, probably not, but in my opinion, this is a matter of principle. What you're saying is that, that this facility, this car shredder, is unsafe for the north side because they are, uh, you know, rich and it's an upscale neighborhood. But you know what? It's fine. Let's just send it down to the south side where they can, um, you know, pollute. It's already bad down there. Um, you know, we're, you, you've heard from everyone, we're generations of families here. We're, we're done. We don't want these, these dirty companies here anymore. Yes, we want jobs. We have, uh, I don't know how many acre, hundred acre facility uh, expanding by the Ford plant. I mean, that's gonna bring a ton of trucks and a ton of, ton of pollution.
Mr. Velez, you have, you have twenty seconds, please?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it sounds like everyone has already made up their mind. Um, we're, it's time to, to clean up the southeast side. We don't want these dirty businesses down here anymore. We want, we wanna have a nice neighborhood, just like the north side. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. Um, I just want to do a quick time check and let you know that we have approximately ten people who are residents of the tenth ward who uh, would like to speak. So we are moving ahead on with Ronnie Fason. And after Ronnie, we have Yesenia Chavez. So Ronnie, if you are here, please feel free to start. Okay, we will move on to Yesenia Chavez.
I'm here.
Ronnie, go ahead.
I'm so sorry, it didn't allow me to uh, to, to unmute myself. Um, good evening. My name is Ronnie Fason, and I'm the principal of a small parochial school on the southeast side, as well as a life, a lifetime's resident of South Chicago. As a leader, we often are asked to do the impossible. We're asked to consider the needs of all of those that follow us. And I better than anyone understand how impossible that task can be. But there's often a moment that comes, and for me, that moment is often in the middle of the night, where my gut tells me what's right. As a leader, I pride myself in following my gut. We must remember that our young people look to leaders as an example. They trust that those leaders will make the best decision for them and their future. The southeast, the southeast side is an extraordinary place, a place that I'm not, I will not only work, but live. And as I look toward the future, it is where I pray I raise my children. I was recently interviewed and they asked me to speak about the people on the southeast side, and I exclaimed, "We are survivors." But we're tired of surviving. We're tired of the steel mills, the close of the steel mills, the disintegration of our neighborhood, a food desert, gangs and violence, the lack of access to resources, uh, appropriate educational opportunities and healthcare. It's enough. The move of General Iron to the southeast side is an environmental racism. We would never see a business uprooted from South Chicago and placed in Lincoln Park. It would be unheard of. It follows the thought process that putting children's health and well-being in jeopardy is just fine, as long as it's black and brown children. Let us thrive. Please stop creating new challenges for our students to contend with. Stop moving the finish line. Stop a notorious polluter from entering into our neighborhood. I agree that industry is needed, but do we need this one? Our students do need post-secondary options, but are industrial jobs it? In closing, we, can, can we address that some of the speakers today were obviously prepped by their employer to say exactly what needs to be said in order to support the company in which they work for? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fason. Uh, we will move on to Yesenia Chavez. Yesenia, if you are here, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Yesenia.
Hi, thank you. Um, so I honestly had a whole speech ready for you guys, but this is just a lot of BS. You, you all should be very ashamed of yourself, every single one of you working, working for the city of Chicago. And congratulations to all the RMG employees that got their holiday pay early, just to say that BS little statement that you guys did. Um, you guys wanna talk about the science that goes behind what we're concerned about and the pollution? So let's talk about it then. Talk about the micrograms of particulate matter that are gonna be released into our air. Talk about that, because they're not visible. So you guys are being slick with the verbiage that you're using in regards to that, right? Because you're talking about stuff that isn't visible, that's gonna be released into the air, is gonna be contained. What about what's not visible? Because that's linked to a decrease in academic performance for our students that is linked to cancer, that is linked to diabetes, that's linked to lower rates of fertility, and that's linked to early death. One in eight deaths in this country is linked to air pollution. Get real. All of this is a facade. You guys are wasting our time in the middle of a pandemic. We're tired. We've had to endure school. We've had to endure job loss. We've had to endure financial insecurity. We've had to help our residents get their lives together just so we can maintain some sort of sanity. You guys should be ashamed. This is ridiculous, ridiculous, ridiculous. Like, I, I don't even know what else to say. You guys are wasting our time. You know we don't want this facility here. You know it's gonna take years of our life. You know that. And you're holding that information from us because you don't want us to put it in front of you, because you don't wanna face it, because you're ashamed of what you're doing. And you're filling your pockets with the money that these people are giving you. And we're not stupid. We're not. And we're not gonna stop when BS stops, because we're tired. And we're gonna defend our students. We're gonna defend our parents. We're gonna defend our residents. We're gonna defend our organizations with or without your help. We're not gonna stop. So I'm walking out on BS. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Rochelle, I'm sorry, we have Isaura Pacheco. Isaura, if you are here, please go ahead. Isaura, please go ahead. Okay, we will move on to Rochelle Williams McKinley.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Rochelle, please go ahead.
Okay, um, I consider this to be genocide. After so many people of color have died from um, the pandemic and COVID nineteen uh, because of systemic racism, now our mayor wants to add environmental racism. Uh, there is a federal law uh, called environmental justice. And environmental justice, I know you guys as professionals are aware of this law. And environmental justice law dictates that you should not put environmental hazards in disproportionately impacted communities of minorities and low-income residents. This law is already on the books, and you know better, okay? It also says that the community is supposed to be involved in the decision-making process. These public commentaries are not involvement in the decision-making process because it's being held after the initial licenses has already been issued and the facility has already been built. So there has not been any community involvement in the process. And also, this should not be limited to just the tenth ward. Research has shown that particulate matter from a metallic dust, uh, PM two dot five, which is what it's scientifically called, can travel more than a hundred miles. So all citizens should be able to participate in these public hearings. So I demand that you need to hold additional public hearings and invite all residents of the city of Chicago to participate. You're releasing toxins that become airborne, um, such as lead.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. If you could, uh, wrap up, please?
I'm sorry?
Um, your time is up, Ms. Williams.
Okay, you didn't give me a warning. You didn't say twenty seconds or thirty seconds?
Please wrap up.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, you already know that the black community have high incidence of asthma, bronchitis, and blood pressure, and you know that this type of business is going to substantially increase the illness in the community. So there's no way this should have ever been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We have next, Yesenia Alcassaj. Yesenia, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Yesenia, we can hear you.
Okay, awesome. Um, I just wanna say that I've been a resident of this ward my whole life, and the legacy of pollution is what inspired me to pursue my master's degree in city planning, which also means that I get to have firsthand experience into analyzing these sorts of book handling regulation documents in depth and seeing what a load of BS they are. Upfront, this is another act of appeasement. Um, I don't know if you think this whole ward is just uneducated and can't see that, but that is absolutely not the case. And um, it's been a common theme here that when uh, residents here have been against this facility that's coming into our ward, that if they have like technical issues when they're speaking, it's kinda just brushed off and moved forward, but when we've had speakers that have been in support of this move that have technical issues, it's, oh, do you need more time? Do you, oh, you were cutting off there. And that's like, that's just very telling. So just to echo, um, I fellow activists here, this is just ridiculous. It's silly. It's a waste of our time. And, you know, we're not, we're not blind to seeing that. So that's all I have to say about that. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Ms. Alcassaj. Um, and that concludes the list of residents from the tenth ward who wish to make a comment. We are now going to move um, to individuals outside of the tenth ward. And so next, we have Robert Wiss, or Wise. Um, please uh, go ahead, Robert, if you're here. And after Robert, we have Edith Dobash.
Hi, uh, thank you. Actually, I am a, can you hear me, by the way?
We can hear you, Robert. Go ahead.
Okay. Actually, I am a resident of the tenth ward. I'm also president of the Heglish Business Association. Uh, in the past, we've had a lot of industries, dirty industries coming into the southeast side of Chicago. And yes, they have taken advantage of us in the past. We had SCA Chemicals, we had Waste Management. Uh, currently now, we're the last bastion of vacant land in, in Chicago. So as industry is brought in, whether it's warehousing, we've got a Ford expansion, more re- or relocated businesses. We've got to uh, take all this into consideration that the extra pollution, traffic, and noise affects the community. Uh, these businesses and industries need to contribute back to the community. Uh, there's gotta be community benefits agreements in place before any type of expansion occurs. Uh, we've got extra uh, truck traffic. I believe this project's gonna be looking at four hundred uh, extra vehicles coming, uh, trucks coming in. Uh, we've gotta look at things uh, that can mitigate diesel emissions like alternative fuel. Uh, we've got, uh, we've gotta have extra air monitoring, our air quality monitoring, so that we could uh, be strict and protect our local residents. But we, we do have to have a community benefits agreement that can help our business districts, our schools, our community organizations. We should be looking at a minimum of, of two and a half or three percent of these projects. And, but we have to make sure that these projects are clean and they're not going to hurt our local, our local residents. Uh, so.
Wise, you have twenty seconds?
So we've gotta take a look at this in the big picture so that uh, we are, are not uh, pushing away jobs, but that we're taking safe jobs, and regardless, we have to take into consideration our, our, our local population. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Edith Dobash. Is Edith here? Okay, we are moving on to Amalia Nieto Gomez.
Edith is here.
Okay.
Hello, good evening.
Edith, please go ahead.
Yes, hello. Uh, my name is Edith Dobash. I am a lifelong resident of the Little Village community. I am here in solidarity with the southeast side um, residents. Um, I am saddened uh, by uh, the number of supporters, right, employees that unfortunately, I believe have been misled, right? Um, even though those so many years of contributing to that company, I'm worried, I'm honestly worried about their public health. Uh, I'm trying, you know, not to uh, take a lot of offense, right, because we are also see, hearing those types of conversations uh, in the Little Village community. Um, what I have to say is that, um, you know, I heard uh, Dr. Awadi talk about air monitoring. Um, we have air monitoring here. Um, CDPH um, said that, uh, you know, they would um, update and um, uh, community residents of what's happening here, and unfortunately, we just haven't seen that. And so, um, I'm, you know, I'm seeing this now that uh, not the appropriate information or all information is given, um, but it's not given in, in an opportunity where residents can truly understand uh, what is happening in their community. Um, there's also going, um, there's so many ongoing projects, right, across the city of Chicago that are literally targeting the west side and the south side uh, with industries and warehousing um, that will only bring hundreds and thousands of diesel trucks to our communities. And um, like, you know, many residents have stated, particulate matter, you can't see it. How do you know that you're not literally breathing in? Um, I'm saddened that many of our residents here in Chicago are unfortunately becoming um, the air filters uh, that these warehousing and these type of industries are coming into our communities. Um, I would also like to highlight that the own city of Chicago published an air quality report um, in the summer. And what was highlighted and read, those same communities, environmental justice communities that continue to be targeted, that continue to be sacrifices zones. And so I just wanted to restate that even here in Little Village, um, here, we are standing in solidarity with residents of the southeast side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Um, we invite now Amalia Nieto Gomez.
All right, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Amalia, please go ahead.
Okay. Uh, my name is Amalia Nieto Gomez, and I am with the Alliance of the Southeast and the Coalition for South Work CBA, uh, made up of southeast side residents and local community organizations. And we urge the city to deny the permit for General Iron and RMG. Uh, we stand, I stand in solidarity with southeast side residents. Uh, it is environmental racism to keep having policies that result in toxic developments locating to the southeast side. Lincoln Park residents have been complaining for years about the toxic air. Um, to point of some folks that live downwind have um, crying on the days that uh, air pollution is really bad. The southeast side is already overburdened and is a recognized environmental justice community by the Illinois EPA. We already have high asthma and cancer rates, and everywhere I go, um, what I hear is people are tired of being the dumping ground for the city. We miss the point about relocating companies that are safer if we are not paying attention to what the result is and what the companies that are already here are. Again, I'd ask you to deny the permit for uh, General Iron and RMG. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nieto Gomez. And up next is L'Oreal Murphy. Ms. Murphy, if you are here, please go ahead. Okay, we are moving on to Margaret Galca. Ms. Galca, if you are here, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm here.
Thank you, Margaret. Go ahead.
Hi. Um, my name is Margaret Galca. I'm here in solidarity with the southeast side, and I urge the city of Chicago to not issue a permit for this facility. The definition of environmental justice is the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people, regardless of race, color, national origin, or income, with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies. I live near the current location of the General Iron facility in a predominantly high-income white neighborhood. There is nothing fair about this facility moving from this community to the southeast side. Also, meaningful involvement in this process means a real opportunity for the community to share other impacts that they're facing in addition to this proposed facility, such as other air pollution, other ground pollution, cumulative impacts. This facility isn't existing in isolation. And I urge the city to take that into account and deny this permit. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Galca. I just want to do a quick time check. It's 7:52, so we have an opportunity to hear from two more speakers. And up next, we have Patricia Burton. Ms. Burton, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Patricia Burton, and I'm in the 7th ward. And I do stand in solidarity with the southeast side. I've been in, in the South Shore community. I have a history here that dates back to 1959. And the pollution in this community is horrible. I myself suffer severely from asthma because of the level of pollution that already exists in this community. This hearing that we're going through is just a formality or a technicality because this is just the final step in them going ahead and doing what they've already made plans to do. I resent the fact that the community was not alerted much sooner than this about what was going on. This isn't something that just happened in 2020. This has been in the making for a while. And the community should have been made aware of it. I think that once again, communities of color have been slighted by the decisions that are being made by people with big bucks. We don't have the big bucks, or some of us don't have the big bucks or the means to, to do a lot of blocking. But I think that together with those that stand in solidarity with the 10th ward should come together. And this hearing, if they, when they go ahead and, and continue to do what they plan to do, that there should be a retaliation going through legal channels in order to put a block on this. This is, it's unbelievable that once again, this city has shown no regard for its citizens that have the highest need. This community and the people in this community and the youth, the children, cannot take any more of the abuses that those with money feel is okay. The air quality here sucks, and it's only getting worse. And to have, and to have.
You have, you have 20 seconds to wrap up.
And to have this to be approved, to come into this community, is, it's total disrespect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. And we have an opportunity for one more person to speak, and that would be Jamal Mahmood. Jamal, if you are present, please go ahead and speak.
Good evening. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Jamal.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Here's another story of corporate greed. Mr. Vice President Adam Labcon of General Iron and his brother, our Labcon sued him in 2017 for breach of fiduciary duties. The suit claimed that Adam Labcon has harassed employees and falsified records on hazardous waste. These acts make him a white-collar criminal. Mr. Adam Labcon's company, Lincoln Park, has several explosions. His company has perpetuated the problem of poor air quality and has produced repugnant chemical orders comprised of fluff and dust. In addition, General Iron has a history of violations with the EPA, and the company paid the city of Chicago $18,000 in fines. General Iron Company has pled liable for dozens of violations of air quality control. Alderman Hopkins said, "We are in the middle of a respiratory pandemic." He also added that General Iron is a health hazard and committing toxic materials, end quote. Those materials are affecting surrounding neighborhoods. Southeast Side has suffered from environmental racism. We already have preliminary dilemmas affecting our children, adults, and elderly. Southeast Side filed civil rights complaint to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The complaint argues that the city of Chicago has facilitated covert operation to ease the restrictions of General Iron facilities from all-white affluent neighborhood to already disenfranchised black and Latinx acts community. To city officials, this toxic waste company is going to be working within a half a mile from elementary schools and high schools. Our future generations that state, our planet is at stake. Yes, we need good-paying jobs, but not at the price and not in this already contaminated locale. Deindustrialization has left its footprint on the southeast side of Chicago, but that does not give the right to General Iron to sign our death warrants.
You have 20 seconds to wrap up, please.
And that does not give the right to General Iron to sign our death warrants. I close by saying, we are no longer persuaded by industry's devil's lottery. And my advice to General Iron, if your company originated from the massive state of Texas, why don't you take your recycled metals and build a rocket ship? Houston is waiting for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmood. And thank you, everyone, for your remarks. This officially concludes the public comment section of this hearing. I would now like to hand it back to Dr. Awadi, who would like to share next steps with us.
Yes, thank you really, everybody, very much for your comments, your thoughts, your passion, the way you care about your community, and some of your ideas. Again, we are particularly focused at the Health Department on ensuring that any permit application has to meet all of these stricter standards. That would be true for any applicant for a large recycling facility, regardless of where it is in the city of Chicago. I certainly heard a lot of concerns and questions related to dust and particulate matter, 2.5, 10, et cetera. Certainly, this is where we are focusing a lot of our efforts, both what we're required, you know, in these, these new large recycling rules, as well as some of the details that our engineers will be looking at in a lot of detail as we review this permit. Any applicant has to adhere to the ambient air standards that have been set. I want to reassure you about that. The way we are really looking to ensure that this applicant or any applicant would meet those is by putting, requiring them to put in place the continuous air monitoring and even this 15-minute reporting. But we will pay extra attention to that part of the permit. I think we will also request, we have, we have the opportunity at this point, and we will be putting together some deficiency notices to the applicant. We will be pulling in comments from the question here, looking for more information, and really raising some of the concerns that you've had or that our own engineers at the Health Department have had as they reviewed it. So we'll be looking, you know, based on, I was, I was listening to what you were saying and trying to think about how to fit some of that into specific points that, that are required for any permit. So we'll be looking for some more information about like the air dispersion modeling study, for example. We'll be looking for more information about operating plans for equipment, maintenance plans for equipment. I heard some concerns about volume, so we'll be looking for details about equipment handling capacity. And I heard a lot about trucks and diesel. We also share those concerns. We'll be looking for some more details related to traffic study. And I think also, we'll, we'll, we'll be requesting more detail about what's called track, truck stacking, which is when, if you have a problem where there are a lot of trucks that are trying to get into an area at the same time. We share your concerns about not wanting to unnecessarily have, you know, exposure. So we'll look for some more information related to that. We also will be, I think, what else? I heard not a whole lot about water, but our engineers are looking for, someone had put in the comments questions about the misting cannons, some, some details about water usage, pressure flow calculations, maybe some more about stormwater handling, and then site boundaries, noise monitoring. So we will be pulling together comments, both that we've heard verbally here. Oh, yes, thank you. Just also that will be, you know, looking against idling of diesel trucks. That is absolutely something we share concern about. And we heard, you know, quite eloquently, someone bringing up the, some of the health concerns related with too much diesel exposure. So that's something, it was useful for me to hear those comments. And we will put extra emphasis as we review this permit application, look for more information around that as well. Our engineers are looking through all of the details of this permit. We will be pulling together, you know, speaking to some next steps here. We will be, first of all, posting all documents related to this process online at the same microsite where they've been. We'll be putting together written deficiency notices to the applicant where we will be looking for additional information related to concerns you've brought up here, related to concerns our engineers have seen in the permit. And that may be an iterative process. We will put a deficiency notice forward. The applicant will have the opportunity to respond, an attempt to correct the deficiency in that permit. And we will, again, continue to post all of this. You have the opportunity, as a reminder, to provide written comments on the application. And we certainly welcome all comments, but the, but ones that are particularly related to this permitting process. I, again, have the ability to impose special conditions on permits. And we want to hear about what that would potentially look like, as well as any concerns that you see. Reminder, those go to ENV comments, environmental comments, ENV comments at cityofchicago.org. They're due by January 14, 2021. And in terms of what happens after that, after there's been the round, if, and, if, and only if any of these deficiencies are all corrected and the application is able to show that it meets all ordinances and all rules, what happens then is CDPH would prepare and post what's called a draft recycling permit. There will be another opportunity, if we even get to that point. After a draft permit is posted, another opportunity for additional public comments. We'll take those in writing. They will be focused on the content, really, of, of both the response to the deficiencies as well as this draft permit. We will prepare a summary document of all of these comments and responses as well. Continue to post it. And as would be true for any applicant, an application for a permit is denied if an application does not meet all of the requirements that have been put forward. The permit would be issued only if the applicant is able to meet all of the requirements. So again, I really thank you very much. I heard some people were concerned that, that we had this meeting relatively early in the process, but I really did want to make sure people had the opportunity to hear about the new large recycling rules that are in place, would apply to this applicant and any other applicant. Because I am especially, I'm interested in all the comments, but especially ones that can help make sure that, that, that an applicant will meet those new stricter requirements, as well as some of these concerns that you've brought up. We will be pulling this all together, posting deficiency letters and additional requests for information from the applicant on this website. Please do submit the comments. Things that we got in writing here will be, will be posting. We'll be answering those questions. The goal is to do this really in writing and on the website so that people are able to read answers, even if they weren't able to participate in the meeting this evening. Really, thank you again so much. Thank you to our moderator and to everybody, older women and everybody who has participated here, but especially to all of you for coming out, really sharing your, your passion and your, the, the way in which you care about your neighborhood. We want to protect human health and the environment in this permitting process and welcome every opportunity and every suggestion that you have as we consider this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Awadi. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Norma.
My pleasure. Thank you, everyone. And just want to remind everyone that if you did not get a chance to speak, please do submit your, your comments at the address listed earlier. We wish you all a good night, and we are grateful for all of your comments. Thank you.